Morning, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call the order this public meeting with the Board of Johnson County Commissioners on this twenty fourth day of January two thousand twenty-two at ten AM. Please pray with us if you would care to, and then we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Would you bow with me for a moment of prayer, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we again thank you for the multitude of blessings you bestow upon us each and every day. Dear Lord, I just pray that somehow you would intercede into all of our hearts as we kind of muddle through what's going on in the world today, especially here in our country and the confusion that people are are having. Dear Lord, I'd also pray that you would intercede in the Supreme Court's decision on on abortion, recognizing that we need to protect the unborn. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
First up on our agenda is Franklin Heritage Incorporated and the Our Craft Theater to request approval for county parking lot use on September ninth, tenth, and eleventh of two thousand twenty-two. Hi. How are you?
Thank you.
My name is Rob Schultz. I'm the Executive Director of Franklin Heritage and the Our Craft Theater. And with me I have Jess Giles, and she is the Director of Discover Downtown Franklin, and she's also on our Centennial Committee. Thank you for this time today. Franklin Heritage and the Our Craft are requesting the Johnson County Commissioners to block off part of the county parking lot on the corner of Maine and Madison Streets, the parking lot just directly across the street from the Our Craft. What we're going to be doing is celebrating our hundred year anniversary on Saturday, September tenth with a gala that ends up with a street party out on Main Street. And the City of Franklin has already verbally granted that we will have the closure of Jefferson Street and Madison, and that we will be at the Board of Works meeting to receive full permission on that. This is a very unique, it's our largest fundraiser ever. And the event is comprised of a dinner at the museum, another main fundraising event, entertainment in the Our Craft, food and more celebrations outside. The idea with the tents is that it allows us to spread out more in this day and age of COVID. If we can be more outside, that that makes some sense. We realize it is January that we are coming to you with this, but September is though the most popular month for folks to rent tents, and so we need to get these reserved now so that we are able to have this this large event, and then also helps for more planning purposes. The maps that we have given you show that you're only going to lose a few county employee parking spots for just one business day. Now, in order for them to set up these tents, they will come in on Friday morning at seven, and they have a professional crew that will be installing these. They will not be anchored to any pavement whatsoever. These will all be with weighted barrels. So there will be no puncture of the pavement whatsoever. After the event is over, they will do tear down on Sunday, and then we will be there to make sure everything is as it was, if not better. Again, we mentioned we have verbal approval with the city already about with their Public Works meeting, and then the idea again with this is the the large tents to be able to spread folks out and then have that street open for some of our other party events. We will be hiring our own security that will also take care of everything there. And Jess?
I just wanted to mention I worked with you guys for the temporary farmer's market, moving of several vehicles and with John Gatten to create temporary signage. I know that was sort of a trial and error thing at first, but if that was something you wanted to do again for the, you know, to move the vehicles for a day, then I'm he might be open to that, and I could speak with him about that as well. So.
What vehicles would be needed to be moved?
Corner vehicle sits over there. You're talking about the North Annex, aren't you?
Yes.
Right. Yes. What spots are you looking at utilizing? Because we did not receive a map, or I have not received the map.
Sorry. I received the rental. It's a whole parking lot, basically.
Yeah, the the parking adjacent to the North Annex will be open so that you don't have that the issue there. Actually, where the tents should line up.
I know before on a request, it was not all the parking lot, it was just certain spots.
Yeah, we're just taking basically the center out of it. The parking on the exterior ends will remain. And we are working around the.
The biggest concern, of course, is Friday with the court.
Yes.
Being able to still have some parking.
What time is it? What time is it for on Friday?
They will start assembling the tent structure at seven AM.
We'll get that by the judge. I don't think we'll get that by the judge if we have to close down.
Well, there's the the courts will still have parking along the building there. Is that right, Rob?
Along the, yeah, up against the the north side of the building and.
Parking will still be available.
Okay. I'm going to move to approve this. I've got to deal with one of the judges to get him to relocate his car in. I think maintenance will be all right. We can move maintenance out of there for a day, and if the corner setting back there, I think he can move his vehicle out of there for that day. He's got his thumbs up, so. We do also have, we would have access for sheriff man still, I would assume, for the court. Yeah, I don't think. From what I've heard, they don't have too many jury trials on. Will still be, we could possibly be sheriff, can you, we would possibly need a van in there, will we not? Yeah. That'll be okay. Okay, that'd be my motion. Have a motion a second to to approve pending conversation with the judges over there to make sure that we're clear. Judges. Judges, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Hi. Thank you, gentlemen. Yes, you may keep all of those packets, and we look forward to celebrating this big centennial with you.
We we hope everything is successful, and I'll be there on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, Lord willing, I may not say that, may not be alive by then, but I'm alive, I'll be there. Officials in Department Heads, Court Administrator, approval to apply for the twenty twenty-two matching grant capacity grant for Casa, which I'll bring forward. She is not, Brandy's not available today, so it's an annual grant that we do every year. Motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Juvenile detention approval to apply for the JDAI DOC four-year twenty-two twenty-three grants.
Hi.
You snuck up on me.
Kristy Brewther, Director Juvenile Detention. This is the annual grant that we apply for. They've allotted seventy thousand dollars. It'll help continue some programs in detention, community-based programs, training for a couple of staff members to go to Texas for TBRI family camp.
To approve.
Second.
Motion a second to approve, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Health Department approval of language line services, ink master service agreement pending legal review.
Is anybody on Jeff?
Nobody on there.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, no, Beth, you know Connie. Okay, that's fine. I know a little bit about it, so I'll try to help you out here. The Health Department is meeting some translating services for some of the patients that they deal with on an ongoing basis. They are trying to work through another state agency to get these language services, but this is kind of a backup plan. You see, it's pending legal. If that doesn't get worked out, then they would like approval for this contract so that they can get those translating services.
And it looks like they only get charged if they utilize it, so if they are charged, I move to approve.
Have a motion a second, any further?
Pending legal.
Pending legal.
Pending legal.
Bright red right there. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Emergency man management promulgation of the Johnson County Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan is the start, and we'll go from there.
Stephanie CC Emergency Management Director. It's just my annuals. I come every January for these.
I move to approve her every annual January.
Can we, yes, can we?
Just do one and two, and then we can do three. Say some of the things out loud for the record.
So this would be approval for number one and number two, which is.
A lengthy management plan.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would second that motion.
Have a motion a second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, now number three.
So she she's just asking for a reappointment of some advisory council members. Looks like the first five.
Probably read through those.
Sure. It's the President of the County Executive or Designee. Brian, do you typically serve on this? Okay, so Brian, the President of the County Fiscal Body or Designee, I believe they voted Ron Deere would be that Designee. The Mayor of each city located in the county are their Designee, Darren Hoggett for Greenwood and Rick Littleton for Franklin, an individual representing legislative bodies of all town boards located with the county, Dan Cartwright as Town Manager at Edinburgh, and one Commander of a local civil air unit, being Dan McDaniel. And Stephanie has also suggested some other individuals represent public agencies to provide assistance to the department, including Luke Mastin as the Highway Director, Jesse Biggerman, the Solid Waste Director, Dwayne Burgess, Johnson County Sheriff, John Brinkman for ambulance service, Brett Jones, the City of Franklin Street Department Superintendent, and Heath Brand as the nine-one-one executive director.
And I assume they were approving approving of this. Okay.
Okay.
Have a motion a second to prove, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Sheriff, we have a couple things, approval of Braden maintenance contract and approval of towing service contracts. So number one.
For the burning, does you want to go over that, or you just?
Burning is for the jail, the copy machine for the new part, and I'm going to pay for that out of commissary to take care of that bill.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion a second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two, towing service contracts. Looks like we got one or two more, don't we?
We have a few. I'm adding three additional. It's just like anything else for any other business, business that we're dealing with, especially if we work like office furniture. You know, takes so long to get it. Nobody wants to work nowadays. So it's the same thing as hit the wrecker companies. You know, hey, we can't, we can't respond. We don't have anybody. We're out on another call. I just want to ensure that we have the proper amount of wreckers. Bad weather's coming up, and we just want to be prepared to sheriff's office.
Great, sir.
Pretty inclusive list. Move to approve towing service contracts.
Second, I I talked to the sheriff a little bit prior to the meeting. I think I bring this up every time this comes up is that I I think it would be beneficial if if we could get some pricing from these companies. I just think that by large major made measure that they're overcharging the general public when they have an accident. I've had the wrecker service haul my son's vehicle away one time from an accident, and then I think it was like fifty-five dollars a day storage. It took us a minimum of three days, I think, to get it out of storage. I just think those prices that they're charging are just out of line. So it might benefit the general public if if we could see some pricing from them, some put it on a little bit more competitive basis. I know the sheriff, as he aptly explained there early on, when he's got to have somebody, he's got to have somebody. If the road's blocked, he's got to get them out of there, and I understand that, but if there's a time that would allow, and there could be a selection in the provider, I'm just speaking more for the general public here.
And I can look at that. I can, I've got to address the new people that are coming on board, and I'll talk to all the wrecker companies and see where they're at, and where the price prices, they do vary.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and they're 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 going to charge us less than they're going to charge the general public.
Yeah, any of our vehicles, they're they're towing back the highway department or whatever we may need for the sheriff's office. They're not, they're not charging us.
I don't know, maybe if we could, I I think the towing bill is going to be relatively similar throughout all these, but the daily rental, where they dump the car and wait for the insurances to figure all their stuff out, that's where they get kind of caught off guard. So I, you know, from a wrecker service standpoint, I think they're going to have a pretty flat fee to charge, but maybe the day rental, you might be able to try to get them all to align on one number that's feasible and not outlandish. If you do that, just talk to them.
I can do that.
Okay.
Not sure you can get them all to one number without having pricing.
Unless you said, well, unless you said, unless the sheriff sets a number that says, hey, it's going to be thirty-five dollars a day.
And I think they're probably happy with whatever I set sometimes, so I bet I need to be on some type of line.
I just pointed out because of my experience in the past and other people I've talked to. So I ready for a vote, I guess.
Was that a motion? I got a motion a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Oh, your stock just went down in price. Highway.
Luke Maston, Highway Supervisor. First item on the agenda is a recommendation for approval and execution of change order number two for our two thousand twenty-one county-wide road repair program contract. There's one change included in this change order that changes the asphalt surface type used on the section of Whiteland Road that we paved from type B to type C. This is an eight dollar per ton increase for a total contract increase of four thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Second.
Have a motion a second, any further? And then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, sir.
What what exactly is the difference in B and C? More sand?
It's the asphalt binder that's used.
Oh, the binder.
It's a stiffer binder. Usually you would use a type B or a type C on higher volume, higher traffic volume roads or heavier truck traffic volume roads. Helps the surface last longer. Typically, the sand and the stone is pretty similar between those types. It's just the the actual asphalt emulsion that they change. Next item is Highway Department's award recommendation and request to begin contract negotiations for our two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three bridge inspection contract. After review of the proposals received, we are recommending award of this contract to Butler, Fairman, and Cypher, and are requesting your approval to begin contract negotiations for this work.
I noticed going through the claims that BFNS had several invoices in there under claims, so apparently we're doing quite a bit of business with them right now. I got two things here. One, I see Commissioner Walls is involved in the scoring, and I wonder why.
There was no one else to score. I did not, I reluctantly did that.
Yeah, because I would think that the scoring here would require a certain amount of of knowledge of the process, right?
Of the bridge inspection process, yes. Bridge inspections in particular are pretty straightforward. They're federally mandated in how the inspections are to be performed, how often they're to be performed, and who what qualifications are required for the people that do those inspections. So when you're reviewing proposals for bridge inspections as opposed to, say, a specific bridge project or a specific road or intersection project, there's not a lot of variance. Not a lot of opportunity to come up with innovative ideas like someone might on a on an actual project-specific proposal. The proposals are pretty straightforward because the process is mandated. Ultimately, we've had very good success with BFNS. When we have had issues arise with bridges over the term of of our contract, they have been right on it. When we call them, when we contact them, looking at the issue, giving us some some ideas of can we do temporary repairs? Do we need to do a more permanent repair? There's a level of comfort with how knowledgeable they are with our bridges because they have been doing the inspections. The other, I guess, in my mind thought on this contract is this is only a two-year contract versus a our typical four-year contract. We're changing our contract cycle to assist NDOT. On our current four-year cycle, their majority of the counties within the state are on that same cycle, and that causes contract preparation and review issues for NDOT, having so many in one year. So we agreed to do a short two-year contract, and then we'll go back to a four-year cycle once this two-year contract is over. So since it shuts such a unusual situation and a short contract term, it made sense to stick with the the current firm that we have, since they're very familiar with our bridges.
So the criteria use what, three things? Price, availability or willingness to to respond when needed, and then familiarity, we go to the three criteria?
So so price is not something that we're allowed to consider when we review proposals.
Why not?
Qualification-based selection. That's a great question. Since this is federally funded, we have to follow the statewide consultant selection process, and the scoring criteria that we use does not account for price or cost.
So now you're down to two to to methods of choice.
So there there's a score sheet that I think there's four different scoring categories that we review the proposals and score based off of. That includes, I didn't include that in your packet. I should probably should have done that. That includes the qualifications of the team that they've proposed, if they appear to be qualified to do the work. That includes an understanding of the project, which is pretty straightforward in a bridge inspection proposal. That includes the capacity of the team. Do they have enough resources that are identified to do the work? And actually, I don't remember what the fourth one is off the top of my head, but there's a specific scoring sheet that we have to use for phases of contracts, service contracts that are federally funded.
The only reason I I kind of belabor this point is that I can remember in the past when we had an engineer on board that when we would see scoring, there'd be huge discrepancies between your scoring and the engineer's scoring, which always led me to believe that there wasn't any clear criteria by which the scoring method was applied. So it just seems like it's pretty subjective to me, and I'm not ridiculing here. I'm just making a point. If you take the absence of price out, then it really becomes subjective because you have no concrete criteria by which to make the choice.
So there's.
I I was the only, and the other reason I brought it up is because I thought you were doing quite a bit of work with BFNS, and we had talked about passing work around a little bit more amongst these consulting companies.
So the 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 claims that you saw this cycle, part of that is actually just me getting caught up on some of the bridge inspection invoices that they've sent to get those paid. So it's not necessarily, there's a huge chunk of work. It's more, I haven't been able to keep up with.
Catching up with past.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Do we move to approve that?
No. Do we move to approve?
We have moved on that.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, we did. I think he moved a nice second, didn't I? And then I brought up the conversation.
We have started out the conversation.
No, I thought I did it afterwards. Maybe that was the sheriff was the first.
I moved to approve.
I'll second reluctantly.
Have a motion in a second reluctantly. Any any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Just to follow up on that, Commissioner West, if you're interested, we have a couple more proposals that I've not brought forward recommendations on that Commissioner Walls assisted me with because I was the only one available to score currently. You are more than welcome if you'd like to go through one or or two of those and assist us in scoring.
What does that consist of? Just going through?
A lot of paperwork and a lot of reading.
Yeah.
A lot of time and a lot of reading.
Though I'd like to, I'd like to experience that once if we don't have to meet together.
The one thing that's going to be good, I mean, we, I think you're both aware, we've got an engineer coming on board February tenth. So that will be reverted back to that area.
Yeah, and I think that's good, but I'd still like to experience it once just to.
Well, we have, we have two outstanding if.
I'd be happy.
Pull your toenail off.
But I don't want to, I don't want to take Commissioner Walls out.
No, no, you're, no.
We'd like to be involved.
We can have up to five people on the scoring committee. I don't know of anyone that has five, but the more scores, the merrier. We have proposals if you're.
Hey, you know, I'd like to experience things. I really do.
Those will be a lot more interesting.
Road school's not interesting. A lot of people, but I enjoyed road school when I was up there.
Those will be more interesting to read because they're project-specific proposals, which allows consultants to come up with innovative ideas. This one is pretty straightforward. Not boring, but.
Sounds good, sir. Just let me know. I'd be.
Absolutely.
Not this week.
You take them.
Fly down to Fort Myers.
You can take them with you.
I I could do that. You have to let me get them on the airplane.
They haven't voted yet, Luke.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, you did.
We did.
Yeah.
I seconded reluctantly, but I don't remember voting.
You did.
Yeah, because I said a second reluctantly, we approved it reluctantly.
Okay, thanks, Luke.
Okay.
We were, we were there.
Am I done?
You're done.
Well done. Get a hold of the railroad.
I emailed, but I've not heard back. I emailed after the talk on Friday.
All right. Thank you.
Worth Commissioners Accident and Health Insurance Renewal Proposal for Community Correct. Commissioners accident and health insurance renewal proposal for community corrections.
I'm going to move for approval, and then I'll make some comments.
I'll second it, but I wasn't real clear on what this actually did. Seven hundred ninety.
You might, you might find out under the comments.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a motion in a second. Further discussion?
Yeah. This is a policy run we put in place because I had worked with community corrections to try to get some of those people out. We have provided a van for that agency to get people out and cleaning up community. You know, public service working off times through the court systems. And this hasn't taken place. So I'm not real excited about this, but this needs to be put in place with the other municipalities. I know Greenwood Franklin, some of the other have, have reached out and asked for this service and reluctance on our director's part to partake in this is is what's taking place. So I'm putting this in place because there's gonna be changes made over there. So
So what, what exactly does this?
It's a basically a blanket insurance, insurance in case somebody gets injured, if they're beside the road picking up something, if they get hurt. It's a supplemental insurance in addition to whatever insurance that person or people currently carry.
Is that, is that how the state handles the DOC people that we use at the park? Do they have a separate?
I don't know what the insurance requirements are through the state. I know Web met, you know, I've, we've been down you know, inside Atterbury and, and reviewed that with the warden and went through all that, had the playbook and I don't know if this, I don't know how the state really works their insurance, but we were advised by our insurance carriers to do this.
So the seven hundred ninety dollars, is that per person?
No, that's
That's just overall.
It's a blanket. And if, if their insurance does not fail, this insurance will pick it up as you saw in the contract. So it's just protecting us.
Yeah, we just need to utilize it. I mean, not utilize insurance hopefully, but just utilize
Utilize this service.
Yeah, those people.
These are people that are setting a community corrections and not either don't have a job or they just stay in there and serve their time. So those people need to be out.
Yeah.
Make them useful. We have a labor shortage. Be nice.
We have
On the liability side, I guess we're covered under ours.
This is what
Oh, our insurance policy? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they would
This is just supplemental, like you were saying.
What's cheap enough?
We just need to use
Five hundred people.
Put a couple of people out there to make it worth our while.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that have a work release program, so they're working and those wouldn't be expected to do this, but you know, there's some that unfortunately, take advantage of the system.
Yeah, several. So I have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Post. Motion carries. Approval of engagement letter with Kroger Gardas in Regis, Regis. I feel like it's Regis. LLP.
KGR. Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Posted. Motion carries. Bravo Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash R dash one.
I need to hear something on this.
Yeah. Good morning. Chairman Baird, members of the Commission, Brian Bosma with the Law Firm of Kroger Gardas Regis here with you this morning. Thank you for, for having us here. I'm the chairman of the municipal practice group for a firm, and in addition to public finance and other various municipal representation. About every ten years, we spend a lot of time assisting local units of government in the redistricting process. The, as you know, as the commissioners are well acquainted with, the election division did not return your precincts until the very end of the year, this past year, forcing you to adopt resolutions to reappoint your current commissioner and council districts on December thirtieth. Commissioner districts are, there's no population requirement for those under Indiana law. For the council districts, there is. And the council districts in their current, because of growth, especially in the north and central part of the, of the county, your council districts have a total deviation in excess of twenty percent. A member of the public is indicated an interest in testing the validity of those districts if it's not resolved. And so we were asked by the county attorney and the chairman of the Board of Commissioners put together a proposal on how we generally go through this process. We've talked with representatives of the county who are intent on not delaying the primary. That's our intent also. But we do have a time constraint, so the timeline and the proposal before you draws what is normally a sixty-day process for us down to less than thirty days. If, if the resolution is approved today, that is the first step in the process. The next step will be to put public notice in both on your website, if available, and in the Daily Journal. On Thursday of this week, indicating that there are council districting materials available here at your office, and if members of the public desire to participate in the process, they can do so. The resolution also appoints the chairman of the Board of Commissioners as a redistricting coordinator. And you're charging him with, when he returns from Sunny South to present to the Board of Commissioners and the public a council redistricting plan that meets the statutory requirements. The deadline, both for the chairman's proposal and any proposals from members of the public is February seventeenth at noon for delivery in your offices here. And then there's a special meeting proposed for February twenty-first and public hearing, February twenty-first at ten AM. I know that's in between your, your normal meetings, but we tried to make this as prompt as possible at which the commissioner's plan and any public plans will be discussed. And if you're prepared to do so, approved on that date. The notice indicates that it's likely, or the, the guidelines indicate that it's likely, it's hopeful that you'll waive the reading at two meetings just for the exigencies of the upcoming filing of candidacies and, and to keep the primary election on schedule. So with that, I'm happy to discuss any element. If, if there's one thing you should be sure that you're acquainted with, it is on the first page of the exhibit. The indented portion is the portion of the statute that is applicable here. The rest of the guidelines embellish on each of these elements and some case law elements as well. So single-member council districts must be composed of contiguous territory, be compact, subject only to natural boundary lines, not cross precinct boundary lines. In other words, keeping all precincts intact. Contain, this is the key, as nearly as is possible, equal population and include whole townships except where necessary for the redistricting process. So it's that include as near as possible equal population, that is the charge that the the board chair will return with to meet. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the process or any other element of this.
Brian, there is a, a percentage deviation that's allowed, right? Is that ten percent or what?
Well, there is a ten percent presumption of that, that you it, it changes the burden of proof. If a plan is less than ten percent, then it's presumed to be equal population, but that can be overturned easily. In fact, there's a fairly famous case from nineteen ninety-one to nineteen ninety-three in Vigo County where they shot for ten, started with thirty-three percent, shot for ten percent, that was overturned. And ultimately had to have a plan that was less than one percent deviation, and it was not the commissioner's plan. It was somebody else's plan that met that standard. So the goal here is to not have a court or someone other than the elected officials draw your council districts. So I, actually, I give seminars on this commissioner to lawyers, the Municipal Lawyers Association. I have a section called Beware the Ten Percent Rule. Because people walk around thinking, uh, ten percent is, is what we need. That actually is just a burden of proof issue. If it's less than ten percent, then it's up to someone else to say it's not as equal as is possible, which is what the statute requires.
So basically, you're grabbing to go household to household.
Well, actually
It's gotta be a really jagged map. It's not a square line map.
Yeah, so no, you don't. You have other criteria, of course. No precinct, no precinct splits. No, it's keeping townships intact, except as required for redistricting. It's a very unusual wording in the statute. So there is not a, there generally, it's the one person, one vote standard that's applied to local governments, and if someone's vote is so diluted that it, they do not have an equal representation as the next voter, then there's a question. So for instance, some of the counties that we helped in the last, in the last, end of this last year had deviations in the order of three, two, five. In fact, the guidelines say if it's more than five, either from the chair's plan or the, a public plan, it has to explain why it's more than five. And you may want to keep the political subdivision boundaries intact. That's a valid community of interest that would overcome an absolute population equality. So there's, for local government, there's more deviation allowed. For Congress, if you look at the maps recently adopted by the legislature, it is literally one person. They are as equal as humanly possible. Same for legislative districts. They ultimately split precincts to do that. And I don't know if that happened in Johnson County, but a number of counties had split precincts after the commissioners had already established precincts and had to go back to the election commission, election division, and get those approved quickly at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
For approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve. Any further discussions?
Probably will be some coming in the future.
I'm sure there will. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post.
I'm gonna share a little historical information with the Mr. Bosma there. He and I attended a book signing. Rudy Giuliani came to Indianapolis, downtown. I don't remember the exact location, but Brian and I were there. It was very crowded, and we both were trying to get our books signed by Rudy, and I was in the back. So I'm giving my book, and people are passing it up. Brian was up at the front there. So it was a kind of a special event that evening. I don't even know what happened to my book, but I, I'm sure I got it somewhere.
I, I know I've had some conversation with Mr. Bosma, who has asked me to call him Brian, so I will, out of respect, but very, very knowledgeable, very on top of it. And got a great voice, and I, I see why he made a great speaker in the house. Cuz he has, he has a radio TV voice, and I'm telling you, it really, it really puts out. But anyway, sir, I appreciate your knowledge and understanding and, and your confidence in us to try to do the right thing. I do appreciate that. Carrying on, claims and credit card under new normal business.
Oh, I've got my usual. I got one for the auditor. I noticed that on the Indiana County Auditors Association, the fee was a thousand thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents. I just curious as to why that seemed kind of high compared to the others.
It's based a certain percentage by statute of your salary.
Oh, is it really? Oh, okay. Well, that explains it. And then I had under Circuit Court Travel and Training, Texas Christian University, two thousand fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Likewise, a prosecutor had one for American Airlines with, or not prosecutors Superior Two had one for Texas Christian University, nine hundred forty dollars and eighty cents. I just
There's also, I have those highlighted too. There's also another one for juvenile, for Texas Christian University for nine thousand dollars. Page ten.
Find that. Anyway, I'm just curious as to what that amounted to. And then also the prosecutor had one for American Airlines, said witness fees. I would just I'm assuming they must have sent somebody
Or flew somebody in for witness.
Something, yeah. Jason, juvenile court furniture, eight thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents on the credit card. I was just Yeah. I, I would just, that seemed like an awful high credit card charge. I just, I don't know what your limit is. Your limit must be Oh, did you? Okay.
Yeah, and that was furniture that was needed.
Yeah. Nothing for the chef, surprisingly. I normally always But anyway, just curious on some of those. I still get on the manifest. I don't get explanations of expenditures. They'll just simply say office supplies. I, I would suggest that every department look at the manifests that I get from the highway department, from fleet, from juvenile detention and, and maintenance. I mean, they, they describe every expenditure and do it in detail, and I really appreciate that. That helps me tremendously. Outside of that, I'll move to approve unless you got something. Page ten, huh? I gotta get on that. Did you say ten?
Yeah, and I assume that was approved under grants. That was probably all covered by grant.
Oh, I did have that marked. Yeah, nine thousand dollars. I did have it marked.
I'll suck. Must've been a lot of people.
Yeah, just curious what that
Some kind of grant. I don't, I don't know, but Texas Christian must have something going on judicial or correction.
Yeah.
I have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Post. Motion carries. Minutes of approval, one ten, two thousand twenty-one, regular meeting.
Second.
Motion a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Posted. Motion carries. Anything else?
I, I just want a real quick explanation. Oh, go ahead, public. Well, when I asked Luke if he'd gotten a hold of the railroad, I had a lengthy email, and I do mean lengthy, from a gentleman that lives on Smith Valley Road on that southwest corner where the railroad tracks intersect, Smith Valley Road, right there by Shepherd's Grove. And he was complaining about the noise level. It's him and his wife, they can't sleep, they can't enjoy their home because of the noise that's created by that railroad crossing. So I went over there three days ago, I think, and I got out of my car and I stood there, and I'm telling you what, it is loud. And what has happened, there's plates, metal plates between the tracks, and those things are are given away. As the traffic hits it, they go down, exposes more of the track, makes a heck of a noise, and especially dump trucks go across there. It's deafening. The guy's got a legitimate complaint, so I ask, I talk to Luke and Luke's, cuz I thought they were supposed to deflect. Luke said, no, they're broken and they need to be welded, and he'd already talked at a railroad a good while back about getting that done. But the gentleman was questioning, the reason I'm bringing this up, he was questioning our noise ordinance and whether it would be applicable in a situation of that nature. Of course, the first thing I told him was the railroad just tells us to go fly a kite. We don't have much jurisdiction there. And then I got to thinking, well, who's creating the noise? It's not the railroad. It's the traffic going across it that's actually creating the noise. So anyway, Luke's gonna reach out to the railroad, but it's, I just thought of something that was interesting to me. Here's some people that can enjoy the peace of their home because of this situation and it's, I think somewhere where we ought to have some purview under our noise ordinance, because we we specified in there that if you can enjoy peaceful living, right?
Yeah, we can talk about it, you and I.
I just wanted to bring it up. I really, I really felt sorry for these people. They've lived there about seven years, and they said it's just gotten worse year after year. So much for that.
This, I just, we'd be so limited. It seems like I'm what we could do.
I would say good luck with the railroad.
This week, I guess we could file against them under the noise.
CSX or Louisville, Indiana?
Indiana, Illinois Railroad. It's their, their line down through there, but it might be CSX zone. I don't know.
Well, we'll get into that. Any, any, any public comment?
Required today.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
To adjourn, sir.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We're adjourned. Thank you.